Can you?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to this special meeting of the Bethel Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, February 15th, 2022. If you would please rise, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. All right, I am going to present our budget for the Board of Selectmen to consider. I'm going to be bringing up a share my screen here. So I'm while I do that, I would like to, did you pass out stuff? Did you want to say anything before we?
It just updated sheets for your budget book. A couple of accounts had changed. I wanted you to have a fresh copy of all the right numbers.
Before we get started, can we discuss a couple of questions on the sheet that you have with us?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think it's part of the presentation.
Yeah, it is. Yes. All right, hey Brad, if I'm using the PDF, do you know how I get this in presentation mode?
I think if you just share that screen. So in the Zoom, if you share that screen, then you have to click through it.
All right. All right, there we go. All right, well, I have a couple of opening comments before, before I present the budget. And I'm going to tell you that this budget is very, very tight. And I understand that some people are going to disagree with that when you see some of the numbers. But when we analyze it and discuss it, I think you'll see that there's very little room to go on this. So I'm not recommending, I didn't, I didn't take anything out of this from what you guys saw at the department presentations from our department ads. And mostly because when, when the comptroller and I went through our meetings with each department head, we did it then. We really did what we could to pair the budget back and focus on needs. And I think it's important to realize that we've, we've gone through a number of years now where we've been really kind of struggling with, with costs that are going up. Town of Bethel is growing. The town of Bethel is changing. And I think it's important to note that not all the growth that we see in our school district is, is always due to new development. Because we're seeing two things happen. We do have new people moving into town. Bethel has changed, has grown by nine and a half percent since the 2010 census, which was 12 years ago now. School enrollment has grown and has now reached an all time high. Those two things are not necessarily caused just by new people moving in because you, we're also seeing a turnover in neighborhoods. And I can see it in my own neighborhood. I, you know, we, we don't have the ability to really dig into the data. But five years ago, my neighborhood, there are 20 homes on the cul-de-sac. There was not a single person under the age of 18. And today there are nine. And that, and that is really happening in many neighborhoods. You had people who moved into the, like I said, just to take Chimney Heights as an example. They moved, they built homes, they moved into those homes, they raised their families, kids went off to college, started their own families. Mom and dad retired, moved out, and now we're starting that cycle again because Bethel is a very desirable place to live. We are attracting new families. So it's not just the new homes that are being built. And I think that there's an awful lot of focus on that. A lot of people think that that's the only thing that's happening. But Bethel is actually a great place to live and other people are looking for homes here. So there, the real estate market, as I'm sure everybody is aware, has really blossomed in the last few years. And I see every single August. Because the first selectman's office is right by the front door. I see people coming in to register their register their children. And that is, that's doing a couple of things. It's a, if you're going to have a problem as a municipality, that's the, that's the problem you want to have. You're so desirable that people want to live here. It really, and trust me on this, it beats the opposite. Because I've talked to first selectmen around the state over the past decade, whose towns are going the other way. And that is a much worse problem. But with the growth comes more needs. We've had steady growth in residential and commercial construction. We've had, we've watched the workload at Town Hall grow over that 10 year period. We have a steady growth in police activity, steady growth in calls for service. I'm going to pause right there just, just for a minute. I know that both of our boards, the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance members had some questions for Chief Puckner when he made his presentation. And one of the questions is, why do you think that's happening? And that's a, that's kind of a hard question to answer. I, I, I think the chief referenced new people coming into town. But I take a different view of that. You know, just because somebody might live in an apartment doesn't mean that, you know, their, their crime risk or anything. I got my agenda packet for the Board of, for the Police Commission meeting, which is tomorrow night. Now, in that board packet, I get a list, a police blotter of all the arrests made in the previous 30 days. So many of the people arrested have multiple charges. So there were 42 separate charges listed in the arrest record and 19 individuals, which was kind of light because normally there's like between 20 and 30. Usually a little bit closer to 30, but 19 individuals. 14 of those individuals do not live in Bethel. 14. And that is typical, more than half, about a half to two thirds of the names I see in the police blotter, month after month, are not people in Bethel. So our police department is dealing with factors that are outside of, of the town of Bethel itself. And it has to be said also, and I'm sure everybody's read this in the paper. There has been a spike in crime around the state and around the nation. And Bethel is on a corridor along that Route 6 corridor going down to Route 35, heading down to the bigger cities. There has been gang activity. And that, so along that route is where you see some of these spikes happening. And things like auto thefts and petty larcenies, even some major shoplifting. There was one, a couple caught just last week, one of those brazen ones where again, they were from out of town, they were not Bethel people, and they loaded up two carts at Target and just blasted right out the door. They were apprehended very quickly. But these are the type of things that our police department is dealing with. And if you look at the data that the chief gave us at our, at our, at his presentation, you'll see that compared to our neighboring towns, they are dealing with far more arrests and calls for service than most of the other towns our size. The only town that was bigger was, of course, Danbury. Then we've seen an acceleration of these factors because of the pandemic. More issues with the school, more challenges with the school, certainly more kids. Increased burden on teaching and support staff due to the pandemic, as well as just the increased number of students that need to, need special services, increased numbers of kids who need special education, and increased emotional needs. Now, some people would argue that that's not the role for schools, but whether it is or isn't, it is a fact that our educators have to deal with whether they're equipped for it or not. And I think it's up to us to make sure that they are equipped to handle these things. So the bottom line is, we've gone through a number of years where we have tried to shoehorn our budget into a constraint. And now I'm going to give everybody credit for this. You know, I've heard many Board of Finance members and many selectmen say, well, we have to do the best we can for the taxpayers. Yes, we do. That's absolutely true. But we also have to do right by the people who are performing the work. And I'm going to recommend, you see my budget strategy up there. We want to, the long-term strategy is to continue to build sustainable budget practices. By sustainable, what that means is year after year, we, we have the money that we need in the bank so that we are prepared for the things that come up that we, that are consistent with their 10-year capital plan. That we don't fall into the trap of hand-to-mouth budgeting. That's, that's I, that's a phrase that I, I use to describe budgeting when you squeeze every last penny out of the budget this year to keep it as low as possible this year, but you're not planning for the next year or the year after that. Because it eventually comes back to bite you. We want to reserve the town's borrowing power for capital construction only. We don't want to borrow for fire trucks and plow trucks and excavators and other types of heavy equipment. We don't want to borrow to complete the police rate. We shouldn't have to. We have enough fund balance to cover that with no interest cost. But here's the thing. We also have to provide the staff resources so they could serve the public and they can meet the enrollment growth and we, and our staff here at Town Hall can, can do their job. So what I'm proposing to my colleagues on both boards is that instead of trying to shoehorn a budget artificially into a a number that people feel comfortable with, I think what we have to do is use the financial strength that we have built up over a decade to limit the impact on the mill rate. So I'm going to be presenting a budget that has slightly larger numbers in it because we have some very, very impactful needs that we have to, have to meet. And we've also, in, in recent years, we've cut we've cut some of those budgets down to the point where they were unrealistic. And we overran those budgets. Things like right here at Town Hall, the, the maintenance budget. It's just, it's unrealistic. The, the building is not getting any younger. It doesn't repair itself. Same thing with the 460 account. That was, that was cut down to make a budget work. But it's unrealistic. It does not support the, the maintenance needs that we have at the school. So what we, what we have here is I'm going to be taking this in reverse order. Instead of going through each department, I'm going to show you what the, what the factors are and what my recommendation is. So you can see those numbers right up front. And then we'll go through the, the individual budgets for each department. So the factors that are driving the town side of the budget, and I'll, I'll leave the Board of Ed part for last, but we get the Melanie and Christine and Terry did a great job of describing that anyway. But on the town side of the budget, the increases you see in salaries. This, we, we, we do have a wage contingency set up because we have four unions that are going to be negotiating this year. But you're going to see changes in salary for, there are two positions that were approved last year for partial improvement, approval. So they are now fully burdened. There are new headcount requests. There's a request to move the part-time building inspector to full-time. And the workload for the past few years has certainly justified that request. There's a request for two additional patrol officers. There's a request, I put this under headcount, it isn't really headcount. It's a request for four police vehicles. And we've, we've talked about that, that we've, we've kind of skimped on those in recent years to make the budget work, but that's coming home to roost. And we're going to be making some recommendations on how to better drive revenue for that, too. And then, of course, in the schools, request for special education teacher. And I think the school system has done a marvelous job of dealing with these issues as best they can without making the request. But some of these things are, have just come to come to the boiling point and we really have to deal with that. Road construction. Last year, we funded that at a half a million dollars. And that is not enough. And as you know, we, we pulled in some low-set funds that had accumulated, which worked. I got to tell you, the, the day that Rich Strayton and I took office in 2009, so going on 13 years ago now, the road budget had been half a million dollars. And it was inadequate then. It had been half a million dollars for the better part of the decade. And the roads were in terrible, terrible shape. And we had to spend about $2 million borrowing quite heavily with short-term notes to do that for about four, three, four years to get those roads caught up. And we know the number needs to be somewhere between 900,000 and a million to, again, use that word sustainable, to keep that budget so you don't have to fall behind and then borrow money to get caught up. So we did use low-set funds to, to fill that gap last, last year. It worked, but you know, ironically, the low-set program is for doing, you know, the, we can use it for what we need, but it would really be nice. What, what a lot of towns do is they save up those low-set funds so they can improve their parks. Or they could do something that's going to really, you know, something that's new and special that the taxpayers will, will like. Something that benefits, you know, kids, park and rec system or whatever. You'll also see that I've recommended that we restore program funding for parks and recreation due to the, as a pandemic seems to be winding down pretty substantially. Both the Park and Rec program and the senior center have requested their, their program funds. And keep in mind that those are offset by revenue that's collected. And then, of course, Park and Rec is, is also affected by the, the state minimum wage that is still going up each year by a small amount till it gets up to $15 per hour. That does affect some of the, the camp counselors and the part-timers that they, that they hire. So that is, that's part of that request, too. So this is what it, what it looks like. I'm going to talk a little bit about school costs first. Because, you see, did I, yep, I'm going to talk a little bit about schools' costs. This is something that we've, we've talked about in the past, but I really want people to understand the impact. Even though we have a bifurcated budget, we vote on the town budget, we vote on the Board of Ed budget. They're not really separate. Only the basic educational costs appear in the Board of Ed budget. Other costs, which you see here, town insurance, employee benefits, utilities, school resource officers, maintenance, the accounting charges for auditing, especially school debt. All appear on the town side of the budget as well as the 460 account. So I will take a really close look at that number that's down there at the bottom. This total out of, out of the request for the town budget is seven, little, little bit more than $7.7 million. And that is a $622,000 increase from the prior year. And most of that, of course, is, is wound up in debt. Now, if you take a look at, just keep that in mind, 622, 520. This is the total proposal for the town side of the budget. And this is inclusive of that school debt maintenance cost. So what we're proposing is, this is what the, the department has put together and I'm passing along, $34,534,880. So 34.5 million, that represents an 880, I'll just round it up, $881,000 increase. But again, 622,000 of that comes from the school side. So when you net that out, this is at the actual cost isolating the town only. Now, this is a little bit of smoke and mirrors because we can't isolate it. When the voters go into the voting booth, they're going to vote on that number for the town. And it's going to have all that stuff in it. But if you net that out, the actual change we're requesting for the town budget to handle those needs, to handle those headcount needs, to handle those programming needs, and to make sure we have enough staff resources to do what they're supposed to do is less than a 1% increase. It's five, $258,000. When you put the town increase and Board of Ed increase back together along with school maintenance of debt. That total comes to a three, a little bit more than a $3 million increase in the total budget or a 3.69% increase. Now, I'm going to pause right here. Notice the deadline. The deadline actually went up, but we're showing a negative. And that is because when, when I talk about using the financial power that we have built up carefully over 12 years to benefit our taxpayers and to give them a break, to give them some relief from these costs. Because these costs are real. This is the cost of doing business in the town of Bethel these days. And there's really not any, any letup in sight. So we're, we're dealing with it as best we can. We have a lot of people working nights and weekends to try to keep up. But we, we need to give them some relief and make sure that they can meet their statutory guidelines. But what we have here when you, when you look at how the comptroller has structured the deadline, he's using a fund called the debt service account. And I'm going to ask him to explain that in a minute. So a 3.69% increase in the budget that handles the request is, amounts to a 1.46% increase. If, if nothing else changes in this budget, 1.46% increase, that equates to about $109 per year to the average taxpayer. And I'm going to pause right here and ask Brad to explain the debt service account.
Yeah. So the debt service fund has grown over the years. Last audited amount was 3.7 million. At this time, we're comfortable drawing that down. It's built up over time. We purposely built it up because we knew this school debt was coming on. Now that the school debt is all bonded, we've gotten the returns that we thought we'd get from the state. Because that was one of our concerns, too, that if suddenly the state changed the amount that they were going to fund of the school renovation. We wanted to have this debt service account there to take care of that. The state held up their end of the bargain. So now it's time to start using it down and using it down over the next six or seven years is the plan. So it's, we're taking a big chunk the first year. It's 1,328,329,000, nearly, of the 3.7. It's aggressive, but I think it's considerably aggressive in the fact that when the six-year run out, I think we're good.
So that's the, that's the preamble. And I'm ready to go into budgets by department, but I want to pause here. Yes.
So Brad, is that why, when I look at this sheet, we said that a mill equals just shy of let's call it 2,200,000, basically.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, about 100 something dollars, right? 2.2. So the overall budget went up 3.1. So we're buying the mill rate down to half a percent by using that million, correct?
Well, we're not going to use the word buying the mill rate down because rating agencies don't like that. But yes, essentially, we're using our debt service fund to maintain our expense side so it doesn't get hit on her.
So my question is, assuming everything stays the same, what happens at the end of six years? You feel that that's, the debt service is low enough where that balances out? And it's not like when a grant runs out and we run into a?
Yeah. So there's two things. One, at the end of the six years, there's still $600,000 in that chunk. So if nothing else happens, there's six, still 600,000 to put towards any new debt that we have on there. Right now, there's nothing planned, any major capital plans. So I'm pretty sure our debt service is going to start dropping. The schedule I provided you does show after the six years, we're just right to where our current debt load is because stuff we're paying off. The other factor is that the, when the school audit is done on the renovations, the state has a holdback right now. So when they release that holdback, some of that money I anticipate is going to go into the debt service fund. And the reason I left the 600,000 plus whatever they anticipated in, at some point, the town's going to take on debt again. So as it starts to climb back up at that, after that, if that is the six-year loan, we can maintain that and control decline instead of having it jump around.
Is this plan also contingent on future select boards and Board of Finances approving this each year, approving? Next year, if they don't approve your transfer of debt service funds, we could run into a problem in terms of now we're short a million dollars, or you're starting a million dollars in arrears.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a million. So
800, whatever, whatever.
Yeah. So right now, correct. So right now, this year, if we didn't use any of this fund, round numbers, we'd be at $6.8 million in debt. Next year, because this is a peak year, '23, if we didn't use anything, we're at 6.1. So there is a $700,000 drop year over year. And I'm taking it down to 5.5. So you're right, there would be a $600,000 hole if we don't. There's no reason for us not to use this money at this time. A year from now, we might be going, no, 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 we're not going to do that. And there could be a jump. Like I said, I don't anticipate any new bonded projects coming on soon. So I think it is a good time to do it. I did run it out over six years. So we're not jumping all over the place. You know, because we could have taken 3 million this year. But then, to your point, we're just dropping down to come right back up. And I didn't think that was smart either.
So you think by doing it over six years, you'd be able to maintain a negative impact in terms of, you know, at the end of the six years, we'll be at a point where we would have been and it balances out. So there's no, there's no jump in the cost to the taxpayer. Like I said, you know, I only know grants, right? That's what I do with the municipal world. You know, we get a grant for 500,000 and we were driving all happy. You know, until three years later, when the grant fell off and we're like, oh, we owe, we're 500,000 in arrears. I just want to make sure that this plan doesn't put us in a position where in a couple of years, we're going to go, oh, well, now we're in real big trouble because we're starting and, you know, I only know mills, right? You know, I like to talk about mills. We're one mill in the hole to start the tax season.
Yeah.
You feel confident that this plan will eliminate any issues like that moving forward?
Yeah. Because really, if you really look at the plan, here's the big first year. So we're going to call that one. That's the big chunk. The following years, we use 650,000 of it and then 520. So bigger chunks. And then it's 180, 167, 151. Years three, four, five, and six, we're not actually using that much of it. And the change in the debt service is actually almost exactly what we're using. So we're kind of getting where we needed to be anyway. After four years, we're just getting there faster by doing this. You know?
And that's assuming though, no new debt.
Correct.
So we don't take on new debt.
Yeah. But even if we, if the town a year from now decides to do a big project, by the time that we actually bond it, the debt, it takes a while to come on anyway. So we do have some time to plan it out. Like, Terry, what year was this school?
Yeah. So if, if I could give you just a little history, so I'm not one, I'm not, you know me, I'm not big on buying I'm not for that. I knew back when, when the Rockwell and Johnson projects were approved, we had our debt, Barry Bernabi came and he showed how we were going to have a couple of years of spike. And then because of other debt in the town starting to fall off, we've come back down to a reasonable level. So this, this is a great plan because you're using a debt service fund, which is made up of dollars net for debt. And you're just taking off that spike. But you're allowing, you know, once, once a little school falls off and some other debt in town falls off, it was all going to come back down anyway. It's just that for a couple of years, we're going to have a very high spike. So this is managing a plateau. But it's not building a hole because other debt is going to come off the walls. And, and we knew it was going to be difficult through those years. And then Brad had shown me his plan. And, and I just thought that was great because it's, it's really managing your debt well. And again, the, the holdback at the state is like 11%. So when the audit gets done, we finally get our payment, you know, the final payment from the state, that'll go back to the debt service fund to again use to manage your debt.
Terry, when did we start looking to renovate the schools? How many years ago?
Well, start about 15 years ago.
I, I was still on the board, at least six, well, I was, we really got into it.
So would you say six years?
The projects have taken three years and all the planning was three years, yeah, two or three years before that. So we
Brad was saying, six years
Right.
before we really get into any heavy bonding that we would do. Brad, I have a question. Is this something we have to commit to for the six years? Or is it a yearly thing that you would?
Every year I plan on updating it. You know, if, we're not going to be sitting here a year from now and having the school audit done. This, if we were ready today and told the state, they probably said, great, see you in two years, three years. So there's probably not going to be a big change between now and next year. But every year, I'm going to look at it. But every year I'm going to look at it and make sure that this is still the direct trajectory. Make sure there's no big bonded prop, you know, we could always dial it back. Like next year, the change between the current projected budget for debt service and next year's is twenty eight thousand dollars. So, you know, if we need to make a two hundred thousand dollar change, it's up a little bit. You know, or if there's more money in there, we could drive it down quicker, but I just, when I looked at it initially as more aggressive, but I wanted that holdback. I think we're good. I think we're good and it's time to use some of this money to take this peak out.
Yes, Terry, Terry, do, do we have an idea how long the budget accounting from the state will be for the projects?
Well, at every building committee meeting, we talk about getting it closed out. So the sooner the project really is wrapped, the sooner I can put a final, what they call a final filing with the state. And then that can trigger the audit, but we don't know where we would be on the list of scheduled audits. I mean, the sooner the better.
Yeah.
Because they have a holdback and we like to see that we'll get the rest of its money. So you've been at the meetings.
Well, I, I know, I, I think.
See, and that's part of why you hear me always say, let's, you know, let's get going.
Well, I, I think, you know, when I was on the middle school project, I think that was ten years in the making before we finally got that audited money back to the town.
Well, sometimes.
Sometimes it takes a long time, but I think they, they work a little faster now.
Sometimes there are circumstances though, like after the high school audit, there were, this, the town had outstanding legal issues with several vendors, so it had to go through. We're not going to, this is going to be done. This project, as you know, it, once it's, it's close. And when it's wrapped, it's going to be wrapped and we could file that, that final. Sometimes there are delays in getting that final filing because you really have to be kind of done with a ribbon around it to get that final filing to the state. So that's why I, I keep mentioning to us again.
But with their shutdown, because the state, their workers were shut down and working from home way longer than our local municipality.
Right.
Than the towns was. So I anticipate they have a backlog. They're not the quickest to get to you.
No.
In the best of times.
Let me, let me pause here for a moment, make two other points. One is this is, this is really not our area. This belongs to the board of finance. That will be their choice. So I, I propose this methodology as a recommendation to both boards, really. But if the board of selectmen votes to pass it along as a recommendation, it would, it would be in the hands of the board of finance. So that's, that's an important thing. Now, the second thing is a question. I have the departments in my PowerPoint. Do you, and they, they go in the same order as the budget book that Brad put together with the prefix, the two-digit prefix. Do you want me to just spin through these and then we can go back and consider, or you want to think about it and then bring it back on Thursday? You know, what's, what's your, what's your pleasure? Because there's really not a lot of changes that I'm recommending in there.
Well, why don't we just go line by line, go through them quickly and?
Okay, all right.
Personally, I mean, I, we're going to make recommendations to, I'd like to hold off until Thursday, so I have.
Okay. Well, this won't, this won't take too long. I'll, I'll just cover this because there's a couple of notes that, why don't you guys go and see? Oh, one other thing. This is, there's another revenue policy that I've been thinking about for years. Brad and I have been talking about it. I remember speaking about it with Mr. Manfreda too, a couple of years ago. More and more towns are adopting a stabilization policy. So basically, this is what Brad is, is recommending that we do with the, with the debt load. Using, using that debt service fund just to smooth it out because the debt falls off in a few years anyway. But it is possible to, on occasion, capture surplus from the prior year and use a portion of it to stabilize your bill rate too. Ridgefield has done this for quite a few years. The town of South Windsor just, that was just upgraded to triple A bond rating. Basically on the strength of their policy that was crafted to allow them to do that. I am not making a recommendation to do that. It's something that has to be done very carefully. We have to craft the language and spend some time on it. But certainly before next year's budget season, I would like to have something in place. So that's another, that's just another thing to keep, keep in mind. Again, the goal is to be able to adequately fund our departments and make sure they can all do the things they need to do and minimize the impact on taxpayers. So I'm just going to move ahead. This will be pretty quick, starting with selectmen. This, the salary changes, you see, basically the, the bulk of that is the increase of the first elected salary that you put in, I assume that the board of finance put in last year. There's some increase in hours in the benefits coordinator as well. Oops, sorry. Treasurer, no change. Finance office, office of the comptroller. This is a modest decrease in salaries. Little bit increase in some other areas, but a net decrease. This is because we have, because of employee turnover with Mr. Kozlowski retiring, with Brad coming in and with Sebby taking over as assistant comptroller and so we will have some people who are at lower steps for a while. So there's a decrease there. Town clerk, modest increase, two point nine three percent on the basis of the salary increase that the board of finance granted the town clerk last year and then an expected increase in election expenses due to primaries. Assessor's office, mostly salary increases and a little bit of software with the camera system. Salary increases are a little higher than normal because of steps. Where some people, employees had satisfied their requirements and got a little bit more because of the, the step increase. Task collector's office, because of employee turnover, we have people coming in at lower steps. So there's a slight decrease there. Legal services is one of those accounts. And I will, I will do the mea culpa and I'll say, I'm just as guilty as anybody that we just cut the budget to make it work, just to make it work. And it was not realistic. It, it is constantly overrun because legal costs, if you're, if you wind up in court, if somebody takes you to court, if you had tax appeals, you get land use appeals, you have to deal with them. So this is an attempt to bring this. We do have negotiations coming up and it's going to drive up the, the legal services a little bit, but it's also a move to bring this to reality so that we're not just blowing it up every year.
Uh, that's a good job. It's still like the legal line.
Yeah.
It's still probably short, but it's a step in the right direction.
Right, try to move it up over a couple of years.
Which we've done over the last couple and it's just another step in that progress of trying to get it there.
Right. Probe court, very tiny increase in office expenses there. And this is, this is just our, this is just our portion.
Correct.
Yeah, the other, the other towns fund that too. Information technology. This was another position that was funded for half a year that is now fully burdened. And that's the, and then there were some increases in licensing costs. And I got to tell you, I just read an article in the Wall Street Journal today that there have been more cyber attacks against public entities, you know, public municipalities, state governments, libraries, water and sewer systems, more attacks in twenty twenty one than ever before, and it's becoming a real problem. So some of the costs that you see in there in licensing is for security systems. We have a new two-step identification to make sure that people can't get into the system, at least in theory, that we make it as hard as possible. But we take security very, very seriously because there's a lot of money in the bank and we want to make sure that bad people don't get a hold of it.
Matt, just while you're spelling that one.
Yeah.
Your note says from halftime to full time, that second person is only halftime.
Yeah.
What happened is the halftime, part-time person for IT was in the wage adjustment account last year. So now that that person's hired, they're in the IT account. We.
I meant to say full year.
Yeah, yeah. We had talked about that being a request to go full time this year because the need is there. But that's one of the things that Matt and I took out before the presentations.
I'll, I'll correct that before we go to board findings. Town insurance, good news there. As we talked about, we worked very hard with our risk manager, our risk management office, which Brad took over when we started it and now Sebby's going to take that over, right? Has led to a decrease in workers' compensation. There's a very slight increase in property and liability and that is because we had to layer on cyber insurance. And by the way, you can't get cyber insurance from a, a supplier unless you have some very robust security systems in place. Otherwise, they won't assure you. Planning and zoning. Small increase in salaries. Registrars decrease. They're anticipating a little bit less in election expenses. Town boards and commissions. This is the one thing I wanted to throw out to my colleagues. I, this is left in, the, the one item on here that you can see that the, there were some decreases in boards and commissions, but there was the, the increase that you see is almost a hundred percent due to charter revision. I would recommend that we take that out because realistically, if we started a charter commission, it probably wouldn't begin until the last half of the year and it probably wouldn't incur any expenses until the following fiscal year anyway, when it really got going. So I, I, this is something that something to keep in the back of your mind that we could, we could remove or defer to the following year. Parks and Recreation. That's not a minus. That's a, that's an increase of two point three two percent. Minimum wage increases and putting backs some of the program cheese that they, that had been removed from the prior year and they are seeing increases in participation. And I expect they're going to be full this summer too. Employee benefits, this is a two point nine one percent increase. As, as minimum wages go up and other salaries, the, the FICA goes up. There was, we're, we're, we're still in very, very good shape with the, the state partnership plan and hospitalization, but those costs are going up too. Increase in police pension and increase in the other employees and the town defined contribution plan.
And I have just a quick question. Where, Brad, where are we on the amount of payment or allocation? I know years ago, we were.
Funded ratio.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the towns in the eighties and the police in the seventies, I will get that answered for you in a couple of minutes. So, but I'll, I'll jump in when I have it.
Okay. And is that, is that a standard thing or is it, what, what should be funded now? Above eighty, right?
Yeah, it's all over the place depending on the state wishes they were where we were at. Most times probably do.
Oh, yeah.
We're, we're in a good spot with it. Well, the other thing we've done over the last couple of years is reduced our anticipated returns. I think when Matt started, the plan anticipated like eight percent. We're down to six and a half. And we've done it very gradually, but so otherwise you get big jumps. So we're in a good spot. The rating agencies do not give us any trouble about our funded ratio for our pension.
Funding ratio, that's.
Funding ratio, that's good.
Yeah. By the way, while we're on funded ratio, we actually had both of those things up into the eighties up until a few years ago, then the actuarial industry discovered they hadn't really updated their tables in about thirty years, so people live longer. So when they updated the tables and factored that in, then our funded ratio came down, but we're, we're putting it back up. And as Brad said, that didn't penalize anybody, that.
Yeah, so the, um, the town is at last, we audited years eighty five point two and the police were at seventy seven. When the actuary firm that we have now took over, that's when they noticed that we were using like a twenty year old death rate, which hurt us, and they changed some of the assumptions. One of the assumptions that's always been is that people retire the second they could. On the town side, they don't. People usually work past their eligibility to retire. The police usually don't. When they hit there like twenty five years or whatever it is, usually they go. So at eighty five point two and seventy seven, we're in a good spot.
Intragovernment agencies. Modest increase there, zero point three percent. Cost that council of small towns actually hasn't changed their due structure in about a decade, but when we crossed from nineteen thousand, eight hundred and some odd population and crossed twenty thousand, it put us in the next bracket. So that bumped our dues up by three hundred and fifty bucks. And then, of course, the heart bus increase, thousand bucks and very small increase in Western Connecticut council governments. Utilities. Yes, we have a solar farm and yes, it has saved us since its inception of somewhere between four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars, but there are some big challenges in the electrical generation business these days with fuel surcharges. Probably everybody listening tonight got a nice letter from Eversource or whoever your supplier is explaining that the cost of natural gas is gone up and so on and so forth. And so there's going to be a fuel surcharge and of course, we're not to be into that either. So this does show a six point seven percent increase and the only thing I could say is it would have been a lot worse if we didn't have the solar farm because that offsets a lot of it.
Yeah.
But you, over the past three years for streetlights, what the actual is what?
So that was an account that we thought was going to drop way off because Eversource went through and replaced them all with LEDs and it hasn't. But I think some of it is, so if you ever look that you're like electric bill, there is like the generation, the amount of electric you actually use, the delivery charge. So we're locked in with that. It's the delivery charge that they keep increasing. So even though we've locked in our, like, what we pay for the power itself for the next four years, they keep bumping up the delivery charge on us. But I will tell you right now, with the.
You're locked into a third party vendor.
Correct.
Not, not Eversource.
Yep.
Well, the streetlight line, three years ago was a hundred grand, so it is lower.
I just want to.
Yeah, so twenty nineteen, we paid eighty four. Twenty twenty, we paid eighty two. Twenty twenty one, we paid sixty six five, which probably means some bills were coded to the wrong account. We get, the town probably get sixty electric bills and we had to go through and pull out the ones that are for water, the ones that are for sewer. And one of the streetlight ones goes against normal electric, you know.
So you're saying the cost on our bill?
Yeah, it was probably hit to the wrong object code on us. Because I don't think it would have dropped that much. Through the first seven months of the year, seven and a half months a year, we're at fifty nine. So.
Okay, moving on to Department four twenty miscellaneous charges and transfers. And of course, the, the big change there is wage contingency because of the negotiations that are coming up. So we have three bargaining units here in town hall plus the library will be up this year. So when, when, when it's all said and done, there'll be salary changes in two different areas, but that, this is all figured in there for now as a reserve. Senior Center, eleven thousand dollar increase and ten thousand of that is a request to restore some of their program funding as they, as they're, they're getting more people coming back as the pandemic eases. Building inspection. This is a department that is really under the gun, has been for quite a few years, but it has just accelerated almost exponentially in the last couple of years. As I've mentioned to you gentlemen before, we do have an online permitting system that is a hundred percent utilized in building now, but they, we, we are really very vulnerable to not being able to keep up with the workload here because inspections have to be done in the field. because inspections have to be done in the field, and of course, the inspectors have to have time in the office to review plans that are submitted. So the request here is to take the part-time inspector position, which this is a gentleman that Chris Baldwin, you might remember, described that he basically convinced him to come out of retirement and work for us part-time. He's not available all the time, it's, it's very hit or miss. He, he, he does, he does a very good job, he doesn't, he has other things on his plate, so he's not always available. And this is kind of like the same situation that Laura Vassilis went through with the sanitarians. We're at a point where the, the workload is high enough that we've got to have another inspector. So this request is to take that part-time stipend, basically, or hourly thing, and, and move that up to a full-time position, so we have a third inspector. Emergency management. Biggest increase here is the radio tower lease. That's up at Spring Hill. Fire marshal, modest salary adjustment. Bethel Fire. I want to pause here and just want to give a shout out to the, to the new fire commission. Fire Commission reviewed both departments, that they had two, two meetings that were very thorough. I attended the second of the two, and I thought that the input from the Fire Commission and the interaction between the two chiefs of the commission was excellent. I thought that they did a great job. So this is another, another department where there's some good news with this. Bethel Fire has attracted quite a few new members. So there'll be some increases in training costs, increases in equipment, and then, of course, some of the vehicle maintenance costs are going up. Some of this is supply chain, some of like the big tires that they consider extremely expensive, you know, several thousand dollars a piece have gone up substantially, and those things have to be replaced by law for safety reasons at, at certain intervals. Stony Hill, it's pretty much the same story. They're also doing a very strong recruitment drive and having some success with that. Police Department. Request for two new patrol officers of four vehicles. I, as I mentioned in one of our meetings, I, I may actually make a request for a fifth vehicle, which would be a flat top, as Brian corrected me. Not really unmarked, but without the light bar, so it could be a little bit more stealthy. I don't know if everybody has seen the articles, but at a national level, a state level, too, the death rate on the highways has gone up kind of alarmingly since the pandemic started. The number of calls that, the number of collisions with pedestrians, with bicyclists, with other cars, number of arrests for reckless driving, number of arrests for DUIs, number of calls to my office over the last two years has just been amazing. And the number of times I get calls from people who want speed enforcement, they want noise enforcement, they want intersection enforcement, people just, just blatantly, in fact, I saw one just the other day, the, the, the left turn lane by Whittlesey. What, turning left on the Wall and Hill didn't go on right away, so three cars back, somebody just pulled out, went around, and just cut right straight across. Just in, in broad daylight, it, it was amazing. And our police are very difficult for them to, because they're spread too thin to, they, they do as much traffic enforcement as they can, but there's an awful lot of other things on their plate right now, so this is something I think we need to address.
Can I ask a question to Brad?
Sure.
Brad, we took one of the officers out, I'm not sure if that ticked out of that.
Uh, so the two officers combined are one tenth, so fifty-five is what we budgeted.
And then what did you budget in employee benefits?
Um, so we've never budgeted in the employee benefits for the hospitalization for new hires. We just don't, and we hope that we cover it, because you never know when it come on. We did budget the FICA, so the seven-six-five, so. Yeah, so fifty-five plus, yeah, so.
Any other questions? Okay, move on. Social Services. This is the biggest change here, most of this twenty-eight hundred dollar change that you see is a request to put, increase in the Bethel emergency fund. And of course, this is for, for Bethel residents who have been, we're seeing increase in needs, especially during the pandemic. And Megan has asked for some, some assistance so she can help more of those people. Health Department is essentially flat, the, the increase you see there is the, the person who was assigned to her department for part of the year will be full year next year, so, in the upcoming year, so that's the increase in salary.
So that person makes a hundred thousand there?
No, so of that fifty thousand dollar increase, forty thousand of it's the new hire, the other half, they make things like seventy-eight-five.
So you approved it, I don't remember.
So last year, you guys approved like thirty-seven thousand.
So they were able to start in January?
Correct.
That's why this year we're hitting the black swan.
Yes. It's not, but the whole fifty isn't, there are other increases, like one of her employees is newer, is on steps. But the bulk of it is the other half of that position.
Lead maintenance. Basically, cost of, costs are going up for vehicles get older, costs go up. Public Works. This is another department that is very understaffed for the workload they have, and they are requesting part-time staff due to the workload. And keep in mind that Kathy Galvis was promoted, she now has a supervisory role. And so she takes care of building maintenance, does the scheduling, does the reporting on that, a bunch of other things. So there is a real need to have somebody to backfill, answer, do the phones, more of the clerical work. So that is asking for part-time for that department to fill that need.
I have a question about road construction.
Sure, we're up, up on highway, so here's, here's road construction.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we're at two forty highway.
Is, is it possible that somebody out of capital, out of the term for road construction? Or is that just changing from one account to another, it's the same bottom, bottom line?
Yeah, basically, because it's not, it's not really a capital account, I mean, you, you could do that, yeah, Brian.
This again, the approved budget last year was five hundred thousand.
Yep.
And we have it as it was one point two million.
I'm sorry?
The, the, the road construction account really isn't going down twenty-two percent, it's actually going up almost a hundred percent.
Yeah.
And then we're, but I'm here, we're saying it's negative twenty-two percent, which is very
It's
this, this, and I'm not saying it's intentionally misleading, but when I look at this, it's like, oh, wow, we're reducing the road construction by twenty-two percent. We're actually increasing it by almost a hundred percent.
Yes, that's correct.
It doesn't, it doesn't reflect that in, in our
Well, that's why I put adjust, look at, look at the number for last year. It says adjusted, it was, that number was one point nine million, but if you remember, we had a town meeting to adjust the budget to, to incorporate the revenue that came in from the grant.
Right, but the requested budget is actually four hundred seventy-five thousand more than fifty-five.
Yes, it is.
But we're saying it's a twenty-two percent decrease.
Yes, it is, it is.
That would be like saying I have a grant, but ignore it when it's not, that really decrease in our salaries, our salaries are really increasing by, it's really increasing by four hundred fifty thousand.
That's right, it is.
So we should reflect that, so people understand that it's an actual increase and not a decrease, is all I'm trying to say. That can be very confusing to someone who's looking at the budget who wasn't part of the meetings last year or followed the budget.
Okay. So, well, when we present to, whatever we do with this, when we present to the Board of Finance, I, I will put some more clarity in there, because again, I'm, I'm going to stick with my recommendation that we keep the highway budget at nine seventy-five. We have tried, we, we know with the numbers, we have tried for years to sneak that number up so that we just keep it level, and, and it's not an increase and it's not a decrease. You know, maybe once every two or three years, you have to tweak it by a few thousand bucks to handle inflation or whatever. But if you, if you lower that budget, but any, every, every dollar below nine hundred pushes maintenance out. And that's the trap that we started falling into a few years ago.
But I'm not making a value judgment.
Oh, I know.
I'm just looking for, just so the average person who looks at this budget says, okay, they understand that. You know, it's not really a decrease, we're actually increasing the budget by this percentage.
Actually, if, just to, just to we, I, I will put more data in there when we present it, but if you remember last year's presentation, which I, you took from this forum, it said right in there that the budget for highway was one point two-five million, and then below that, it said half a million in the budget, and then seven hundred fifty thousand from the, from the lots, from the low sub account. So it was presented that way, it was presented as one point two-five billion as the need that we had to address.
So, but this year, my question again is, are we decreasing our budget from last year twenty-two percent out of what we pay out of our tax revenue, or are we increasing it by almost a hundred percent? It's, it's not a trick question, I just want, all I'm saying is, no one's saying that he's not there, I just want transparency. So when someone looks at that, they say, okay, I get it, we're putting the money into the roads, it's
Okay.
It could help you, because some people might say, I don't want a decrease from one point two million, and it's really not a decrease, it's an increase.
No, just a question, did you, did you put nine hundred in your, in the beginning, it's the, it didn't say, it said nine hundred, not nine seventy-five in the beginning of your presentation on the road account?
I'll, I'll go back and look, it, it should say nine seventy-five, because that's, that's what Yeah, all right, I'll, I'll Yeah, right. Yeah, there it is, yeah. All right, thank you for that. This, so this was done in the wee hours of the morning. Transfer Station, not much to talk about, modest increase in tip fees. I will tell you that because we are members of HRA, we are avoiding massive increases that some other cities are, are dealing with. I think the last two years, the city of Stanford went from like a five hundred thousand dollar subsidy to their garbage collection operation to something like a million, a million five. So just on tip fee, so the, the fact that we're part of this organization is helping us a lot.
I have a question about Transfer Station.
Yeah, right.
Some of those containers were in bad shape over here, did we ever get them replaced, or we've talked about the, the hauler or the oak ridge, give us some new ones, or do we have to buy some of those?
No, we can probably get them, they, they did give us some new blast containers, and they did weld. Not, we took care of welding some new panels into some of the other ones, but I, I'll tell you what, before the next meeting, I'll get a quote from
Well, just I know in prior years, they were bad shape, but I just wondered what the condition was, that we needed to spend some money to replace them.
Yeah. Right, I'll check into that. Building maintenance, this is another area where we're increasing the budget to reflect actual costs. Like I said, the Town Hall is not a bottle of wine, it doesn't get better. Tree Warden, budget is flat, and we're still trying to find somebody who will take that on. Debt Service, here is the, the number that Brad talked about, this is the offset from the debt service fund to smooth out that spike and make this a little bit easier to swallow. Library. They put a lot of things on hold during the pandemic, they were curbside only. Megan, you did furlough people for a period of time, too, did you? Yes. And they're coming back online with full services, so I didn't touch their budget, I, because they, they do need that to be able to serve the public. Board of Education, and I'm, I'm just going to refer back to Dr. Carver and Chairman O'Brien's presentation. In, in terms of full disclosure, I also have my, my daughter taught for a number of years, and my son-in-law is a middle school teacher, and I have a great deal of empathy and understanding for the challenges that they're facing. The description that they gave of kids with social emotional problems, number of kids who are need intervention in the schools, the number of teachers who have had to quarantine, have had to get kids caught up. The, the kids who are entering school without having a preschool experience because of the pandemic is putting a huge burden on them. And unfortunately, in, in the American system of funding education, you know, there's, there's nobody that rides in on a white horse, it's always up to each individual town to, for the most part, we, we do give ECS funding, but for the most part, it's up to local taxpayers to fund their schools at the appropriate level, so I, I left this in at the requested amount. I think Dr. Carver and her team did an excellent job minimizing those impacts, but I think this is, this is a reasonable request. Did you have a question? And then, then moving on to four sixty, this was a, this is like the, like the town maintenance account. Three fifty is just not a realistic number, that doesn't even really cover all the, the maintenance contracts they have on buildings that, again, you know, as they age, they require a little bit more. So this is a request to realistically fund this line.
Well, that, I, I kind of also that the two, those schools that were remodelled are much more technical. We need to keep those systems operating well, otherwise it can cost you a lot of money in the future.
Yep. Capital, I'm not recommending any, any capital construction, as you, as, just to remind you from the strategy part. We're moving, continue to move into a, a realm where even for things that apply to capital, you know, that, like, you know, big ticket purchases, like heavy equipment, trucks, and so on, you could sell a bond to cover those things. It's not a good idea, because they depreciate and they wear out, so we're trying to save our borrowing power for capital construction projects, like major renovations or major new construction. I have passed out a fresh ten-year capital plan, you will see that there's plenty to work with. Our C, our capital non-recurring budget, we left flat at six hundred fifty thousand, and currently, we have eleven point four billion dollars worth of requests that, you know, we'll have to prioritize the, the things that float to the top and, and handle as best we can. But we're not recommending any capital borrowing this year. And that is my proposal. So we can go back and go through it, we could study it and come back, we, we have Thursday night reserved, whatever, whatever your pleasure is.
To be honest with you, I have a total out of all the budgets, two hundred thousand, but I would like to propose fold between the school and the global, the iron, to think about it till Thursday, you guys can if you want to hear them, I'll tell you what I was saying.
Go ahead.
Okay, so ten thousand, who would take the charter revision?
Okay, wait a minute, let me grab something right up.
What do you think, right here? Man, they're full, we'll cut it all twenty now. I thought, I thought, I thought at the one meeting, we were pretty sure we'd get ten thousand, you think we can take the full twenty out?
Well, that's what Matt was proposing tonight.
I thought we said
It's up to you guys, when you guys really restart the charter commission?
Let me go through it, and then we could tweak it if you guys want to tweak, I'll just highlight what I was thinking, and that way we can just think about it. So there was ten thousand for the charter commission, if we wanted to go to twenty, we could. Fifty-five thousand for the officer, increase the department by one, and then next year, you know, we can do another one. This, because last year, we had promised them, we would do the one, and we would do one this year, when I was at the meetings. So that would also eliminate thirty-five hundred dollars in FICA, maybe even a little bit more, I don't know, but I'm just using an easy number to represent. So that would also eliminate thirty-five hundred dollars and it's like that, maybe even a little bit more. I don't know, but I'm just using an easy number to represent.
Yeah.
So I said, take five thousand away from the part-time for public works. If you want to increase the reduction in the charter, I guess, if you put that back in.
I'm sorry, how much out of public work?
Five thousand, just out of the part-time. So they'd still get an increase of twenty thousand dollars. For road construction, I suggested increasing it to nine hundred fifty thousand, suggest a reduction of twenty-five thousand. So we're at the nine fifty mark that we're saying we need it. And then from the school side, I'm proposing a cut of a hundred thousand. And I would defer to them in terms of, I was thinking maybe taking twenty-five thousand for maintenance and seventy-five thousand from their overall line. So that's two hundred thousand cuts, but I would obviously defer to the board of that as the experts in terms of that.
So what were those last two numbers from, from four fifty and four sixty? It would be what?
Well, it's up to, I mean, I was indicating taking twenty-five thousand from the four sixty account and seventy-five thousand from the board of education's operating budget. So it would be a total of two hundred thousand dollars in cuts. Right around two hundred.
Fike does forty-two hundred.
And however we want to play with, we could either play with the public works part-time or we could play with the road construction. That's my recommendation for the board that, you know, we could reduce the budget. And, and what does that do to the overall budget in terms of mill rate increase or a half a mil?
Point four one.
That's my recommendation. We could either deal with it tonight or we can deal with it on Thursday. So we, we could deal with those accounts on Thursday if you want, hopefully. Why don't we approve the, the lesser ones tonight? It's only quarter after eight. That would, Thursday night won't be long.
Sure.
As long.
All right. I say, to where we can get done now, because we have to have another meeting Thursday for some other stuff anyway, another special. So, all right. Well.
Honestly, they're not making your cuts. I think you guys can get it out tonight.
Yeah.
There's not a lot to discuss.
All right. Well, you want to, you want to just take, take notes and we can go through this?
Yeah, I'll update. So you want to go through them all and see if we can knock it out tonight?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because we could, we, because we have to vote individually in each apartment. All right. Okay, well, we'll start with number ten, one zero dash one hundred, selectmen. I'll make a motion that we fund that account in the amount of three hundred eighteen thousand, four hundred and four dollars. Was in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Account one zero dash one ten treasurer, I make a motion that we fund in the amount of five thousand five hundred. Those in favor?
Aye.
Account number ten dash one twenty, finance office. Make a motion that we funded the amount of four seven five eight two nine. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Account number one zero dash one thirty, town clerk. Make a motion that we fund the amount of. I've got a, I've got a title in there. What is that number? Yeah, I've got an extra two in there. Two forty-two, four seven one. Those in favor?
Aye.
Account number one zero dash one forty, assessor. I make a motion that we fund in the amount of two hundred fifty thousand, eight hundred eighty dollars. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Account number one zero dash one fifty, tax collector. Make a motion that we fund in the amount of two hundred nine thousand, five hundred twelve. Those in favor?
Aye.
Account number one zero dash one sixty, legal services. Make a motion that we fund in the amount of three hundred nine thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars. Those in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Account number one zero dash one seventy, probate court. I'll make a motion that we fund in the amount of five thousand nine hundred eleven dollars. Those in favor?
Aye.
Account number one zero dash one ninety, information technology, otherwise known as data processing. Make a motion that we fund the amount of three hundred sixty-three thousand, seven hundred seventeen dollars. Those in favor? Three hundred sixty-three, seven one seven. See, we're getting close to where. Do we vote on it? Account number one zero dash two ten, town insurance. Make a motion that we fund in the amount of one million, three hundred seventy-nine thousand, two fifty-six. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. Account number one zero dash two fifty, planning and zoning. Make a motion that we fund in the amount of two hundred sixty-three thousand, four hundred sixty-two. Seconded by Rich. Those in favor? Aye, that carries. Account number one zero dash three thirty, registrars of voters. Make a motion that we fund in the amount of one hundred thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. Account number one zero dash three forty, town boards and commissions. Make a motion that we fund in the amount of seventy-three thousand, six hundred dollars. Okay, this is the one with charter. So, so we'll handle that with an amendment.
So I make a motion that we reduce lines five five zero nine by five thousand dollars.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? Okay, so on the amendment to reduce. On the amendment, motion to amend five five oh nine charter revision for twenty thousand to ten thousand. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. So on the main motion then to, that total now would be sixty. Sixty-three thousand, six hundred. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. Account number one zero dash three eighty, parks and recreation. Make a motion that we fund in the amount of one million, five hundred eighty thousand, one, one hundred seventy-seven. Those in favor signify by saying aye. That carries. Account number one zero dash three ninety, employee benefits. I'll make a motion that we fund in the amount of six million, two hundred sixty-six thousand, one hundred six dollars.
This is the forty-two hundred for Fike.
Yeah, so you, you have to make a.
Well, let's wait until we get to this one.
All right, I withdraw that motion then. We'll come back to that. All right, so we have not voted on that one. I will go to account number one zero dash four oh five. Inter-government agencies, make a motion that we fund in the amount of four hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred twenty-three. Those in favor? Aye, that carries. Account number one zero dash four ten, utilities, make a motion that we fund in the amount of two million, six hundred thirty-four thousand, eight hundred eighty-six. Seconded by Rich. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. Account number one zero dash four twenty, miscellaneous charges and transfers. Make a motion that we fund this account in the amount of one billion, one hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. Account number one zero dash four thirty, senior center. Make a motion that we fund in the amount of two hundred fifty thousand, four hundred fifty dollars. Those in favor? Aye, that carries. Account number two zero, one dash one eighty, building inspection. Make a motion that we fund in the amount of three hundred thirty-two thousand, seven hundred seventy-nine. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. Account number two zero dash two ninety, emergency management. Make a motion to refund in the amount of forty-three thousand, six hundred ninety-six dollars. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. Number two zero dash three hundred, fire marshal. Make a motion that we fund this account in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and two. Those in favor signify by saying aye. That carries. Account number two zero dash three ten, Bethel Fire Department. Make a motion that we fund this account in the amount of one hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred sixty-five. Right, those in favor signify by saying aye. That carries. Account number two zero dash three twenty, Stony Hill Fire Department. Make a motion that we fund in the amount of one hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. Those in favor please signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. Okay, police department. So I'll put a motion on the floor for department two zero dash three sixty, that we fund in the amount of five million, four hundred eighty-four thousand, six hundred sixty-eight dollars. Okay, so.
I'm gonna make a motion that we remove fifty-five thousand from line five one zero nine salaries. Pretty much sticking to the plan that we had last year, what we said.
So what was that?
Fifty-five thousand, that was the cost. So that's still gaining more officer.
Okay. Okay. All right, I'll second that. Any further discussion?
I'm not in favor of the motion, you know, they didn't ask for assistance. I don't know what the story is with the, the officer that is on active duty, why we can't replace him on a temporary basis. Because we have seventy-nine sworn officers and once never there, they can't replace them.
Is that the military leave one?
Yeah. And it, it's not fair to the department. Plus they're using overtime to fill that guy's position. And I know we don't pay him while he's on, on military leave, but we don't anticipate him, but we're down a man and we've been down a man for years.
Yeah.
And, and some cases, there've been two, two people out on military leave in the police department.
Yep.
So I do not support the, the motion to reduce the individual.
Well, the, 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 technically, the chief could replace that individual, but if that individual decided to come back, then we'd have to lay off the other officer or we'd have to get the boards to approve another head cut.
Well, if that's possible, I, I don't know why he doesn't do it. I mean, it's, you hire another person and it's contingent upon the other guy coming back. I don't, I don't think we would allow that. I mean, that's. Well, if you, if you would ever say hire for an individual that we have here that's protected under federal law, and by the way, when he comes back, lay the guy off. I'm just saying, I don't think.
Yeah, I, I understand, but how many years that, that it goes on?
I mean, it could, it could go on until he retires, retirement. I'm just, I'm just, like I said, I, I know what we had said last year. You know, I've been, you know, I've been a, was a policeman for twenty-seven years. I would never do anything to hurt the Bethel Police Department or, or, you know, I'm not asking to take the cruiser away. I looked at the cards. Free from two thousand fifteen, I understand the need and I think gradual growth is the way to go. So that's my suggestion, but I'll, you know, put a vote on it and try everyone's minds.
Well, you know, I, I, I sympathize with Rich's point of view on this. I, I think there is a solution for that guy that's out. I, I think, I think we can work. I've, I've got to check with the Philons and the, and the union contract, but I think I, I think there may be a way to get that second officer to, to fill in for the one that's out.
Because that would be a second officer.
That would be, yeah, you're right. Yep.
I believe that two officers are currently out of military leave.
We do?
I believe so, yes.
One that we talked about for years. I believe one is currently.
The first one, I think it's great that they're serving their country and, you know, I appreciate their service. So, you know, it's we have a motion on the table.
Okay, so any other comments? All right, so on the amendment to remove fifty-five thousand, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll, I'll support it. So those, the, they.
I'm with it.
Yeah, right. Okay, so two, two ayes and a nay on the amendment. So what's the new total for that department?
Five million, four two nine, six six eight.
Okay. All right, so on the amendment, are there any further amendments? Hearing then, okay, and the main motion then is, is Brad recited the number. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right, that carries.
What was that number, please?
So the total for the police department without the fifty-five is five million, four two nine, six six eight. The salary line goes to four million, eight nine eight, three two six. I'll say those numbers again. Sorry, I said the best. Total, five four two nine, six six eight. The salary line alone is four million, eight nine eight, three two six. Do you want to circle back to three ninety now before you forget?
Yes. Okay, so.
Ten three ninety.
Yep.
So I make a motion that we take forty-two hundred out of line five one one two.
How much?
Forty-two hundred, I think is what that's.
Four thousand two hundred.
Well, here, tell you what, let's, let's just do it the same way to make the end record keeping.
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion that we fund department one zero dash three ninety in the amount of six million, two hundred sixty-six thousand, one hundred six. So.
Seconded for this question.
Okay, so now you can make the amendment.
So I moved to amend that line five one one two, we reduce by forty-two hundred dollars.
Second. Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, hearing done. I'll try your minds on the amendment to remove forty-two hundred from line five four one two. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Because.
Yeah.
All right, so the total for Fike now is eight five eight, zero zero six. And the total for the employee benefit account is six million, two six one, nine zero six. Six million, two hundred sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and six dollars.
Okay, so on the main motion as amended to six million, two six one, nine oh six, is that correct? Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. Any votes? Some votes, okay. Thank you. All right, going back to.
Thirty-two hundred.
Yes, okay. Department three zero dash two hundred, social services. I'll make a motion to refund this account in the amount of ninety-one thousand, nine hundred fifty. Those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Okay, department three zero dash three fifty, health department. I'll make a motion that we. I'll make a motion that we fund this account in the amount of four hundred seventy seven thousand nineteen dollars. Those in favor? Aye. That carries. Department four zero dash two twenty, fleet maintenance, make a motion that we fund this account in the amount of three hundred sixty six thousand five hundred thirty eight. Those in favor? Aye. And public works, the the department four zero dash two thirty. Make a motion that we fund this account in the amount of three hundred eighty seven thousand four hundred seventy three.
A second for discuss.
Okay.
I'd like to reduce line five one zero one salaries by five thousand dollars. Dropping it to twenty thousand four seven four.
Okay, five one oh one. By how much?
Five thousand.
So that brings the increase on that line to
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, twenty thousand four seven four, right? All right, I'll second that. Further discussion?
What was that, for the part time?
Yeah, like a modest adjustment per, per time. All right, on the amendment, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. So the the new department total is
Three eight two four seven three.
Three two four seven three, right?
Yep.
So on the main motion, in the amount of three hundred, three eighty two four seven three, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. Okay, department four zero dash two forty, highway. Uh, so to start the ball rolling here, I'll make a motion that we fund this account in the amount of two million four hundred twenty five thousand three hundred seventy two. Okay.
I made the motion for line five four zero four. Reduce the overall budget to nine hundred fifty thousand. So it's increasing twenty five thousand, but an actual increase of over four hundred fifty thousand to rotate.
Okay, so your your motion is to reduce that by twenty five thousand. Tonight, tonight.
Yep, because this is the actual nine fifty where they want it.
Okay. Right, then.
I'll, I'll second for discussion.
Okay, so we have, we have an amendment on the floor to reduce five four oh four in the highway department by twenty five thousand, so the new total will be nine fifty, okay, further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to, it's a bit more. Brian's motion, take seventy five on the, make the need the nine hundred.
Second.
Well, did you, did you withdraw your motion?
I withdrew.
Okay. Okay.
I'll make the motion up, uh, we reduce line five oh, five four oh four by seventy five thousand.
To nine hundred.
To nine hundred.
Okay, all right, so the, Brian, did you second? Okay. Any further discussion? I want to vote before you guys get carried away. Okay, so on the amendment, everyone who's seventy four. On the amendment to remove seventy five thousand from line five four oh four, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll be a nay. Just to register my complaint, but I actually, it's okay.
The total for highway then is two million three hundred fifty thousand three seven two, two million three five zero three seven two.
Okay, so on the amended total, two million three five oh three seven two, those in favor signify by saying aye. That carries, thank you. Uh, department four zero dash two four five, transfer station. Make a motion that we fund this account in the amount of two hundred five thousand five hundred fifty one dollars.
I'll second a pretty session.
Okay.
Can we hold off on this until you get the information on the dumpsters for Thursday night's meeting? The, uh, then if you do the dumpsters, Rich, you should probably do them through like a C and R.
Okay.
It's gonna be a capital purchase that they're gonna last for a while. You're probably better off not touching this. So you can look at the, so then you can look at the transfer station as a operating versus revenue.
Okay.
I thought you were gonna reduce it, but you're probably gonna fall on a roll.
Well, we use it till they rust away, so.
But not rolling very well right now. Matt and I talked about this the other day, it's probably time to look at the fees again.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it might, you should probably come up with a plan for what the capital needs are. And try to look at the fee schedule at the same time, so you can get on the normal replacement schedule, all this kind of stuff.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right. Okay, so we back to the main motion then?
Yes.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Account number four zero dash two sixty, building maintenance, I'll make a motion that we fund this account in the amount of eight hundred sixty two thousand one hundred and four. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Account number four zero dash two seventy, tree ward, make a motion that we fund this account in the amount of one hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Uh, debt service, make a motion that we fund this account in the amount of five million four hundred sixty four thousand eight hundred sixty nine.
Okay.
Okay. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. Account number six zero dash four thirty five, library, and make a motion that we fund this account in the amount of nine hundred thirteen thousand four hundred eighty.
Second for discussion.
Okay.
The salary line, fifty one oh one. That is for current raises, nothing to do with their contract that's coming. They, they budgeted, Rich. Oh, they won't tell us because they have to negotiate, but there is, as part of that line, is for their union negotiations. Because they're the library and they, they, you know, the bottom line.
Bottom line.
They have to, all the other unions are in the wage adjustment.
Okay, all right.
All right, we will pay from our legal services.
Yeah.
And the contract negotiator, otherwise they jump up and down every time that they have a contract done. But they did budget for potential increases.
Okay.
We're not allowed to say.
I'm just gonna have math.
Well, but there's not, a few for, not all their employees are union, and Megan can speak of it if you want to ask her about it, but most of their union people are part-time people.
Yeah.
And most of the full-time people are non-union.
Well, Megan, correctly from Ryan, I think your budget includes more hours too, because you're gonna be open, correct?
We reduced during COVID, so we went back to full staff, so it's to adjust for having.
And what about the FICA money? Do we pay that or they pay that? It, it's, we pay it.
Okay, okay, so, yeah.
Can I ask a question? This one, I said, your current year budget was six hundred seventy eight thousand five zero three for salaries. I understand you didn't spend them all because of COVID, but really, the increase shouldn't really have much to do with hours, it should have to do with raises. You budgeted for full time, or you're increasing the overall hours of operation. As you understand where I'm getting at, so, you budgeted six hundred seventy eight thousand five hundred and three dollars. And again, I know you can't discuss raises. If of that two percent was due to raises for all the employees, that's almost four two thousand right there. So, the real thing, I mean, Richie's right, the requested budget is just for flat rates, it's not for salaries. Because you had six hundred seventy eight thousand budgeted already for this year, I understand you didn't spend it. Right, because you didn't use it all, but next year you go to six ninety five.
So last year, we didn't ask for an increase to salaries. So we used the money we had from the reduced staff to cover the salary. This year, we're back to full staff. So now we will need to account for the salary increases.
But, okay, sure, all right.
Okay. Hello? Is it cold out? Okay, so we have motion on the floor to fund library at nine thirteen four eighty, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. Okay, so Board of Education, department seven zero dash four fifty, you're right, just in the nick of time. Uh, I make a motion that we fund this account in the amount of fifty one million two hundred twenty four thousand eight hundred thirty one dollars.
I'll make a second for discussion.
Okay, motion is on the floor, seconded.
And I would request from the chair permission to speak to the superintendent or the town chairman.
Granted.
So, my request is gonna be to reduce your overall budget by a hundred thousand, and that's between the four sixty and the four fifty account. So my question is, is, I was planning on requesting twenty five thousand reduction in the four sixty account. And a seventy five thousand dollar reduction to the four fifty account. Is that split? What, what, where it's at? She hits me when I ask this question.
Well, you know, the answer.
All right, then, fine, I'll just make my motion. We're on four fifty?
Yes.
I make a motion that we reduce four fifty by seventy five thousand dollars.
Well, I'll, I'll second it, I just, I I don't like to ever let a motion die, it always deserves a, a hearing.
So that, I, I can share some information. Dr. Carter just came from a board of education. And the board this evening finalized they finalized their, their bus, the bus contract, that the, the bid option of the bus contract, now we have to work on the actual contract. So, um, we would have talked to Brad tomorrow morning, but you, you can reduce our four fifty budget by sixty thousand.
Sixty.
Yes.
Would you, would you consider modifying your, your motion, Brian, or?
I think seventy five thousand is pretty fair on a, with a dollar budget, but, no. Again, you guys, you guys have the votes, you know, so I think seventy five, no, the town reduced by over a hundred something thousand, and we're carrying seven million dollars for education expenses, so, I mean, it's you know, it's seventy five, it's a pretty, seventy five thousand is a pretty fair request. We're talking about fifteen thousand dollars.
Difference.
Difference, not that much.
The budget we put together this year, uh, we looked at every account. We did not ask for any restoration of any of the funds that have been reduced over the last three years. We're working within it. Hundred and twelve more kids coming out of the pandemic with incredible learning loss and mental health needs. My teachers are strapped. They're strapped. Don't have the resources they need to do their jobs. So while it only is fifteen thousand dollars, that's gonna come from some club or activity that a kid is not gonna be able to do. Because we don't have the resource, they need, they need the resources in the classroom. So, I'm not usually an alarmist, I, I hope I have never projected that way in the past. Here at Tipping Boy. So I just offer that for your thoughts.
Okay. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to, then.
We'll tell you what, I lose track of those things, why don't we just vote on the amendment? And then you can put a new amendment on. Okay, so on the amendment to remove seventy five thousand from department seven zero dash four fifty. On the amendment, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Nay, okay, so that, that amendment is, did not pass. I'll put a motion on the floor that we amend. Department seven zero four fifty by, uh, six, well, it's a bottom line, sixty, sixty thousand dollars. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing then, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, that carries. Okay, departments.
Well, we gotta do a bottom line.
Well, we have to do board that maintenance.
No, but, there's only one line, Rich.
So it's only one line.
Oh, you want the new number?
Yeah.
Twelve from the four fifty.
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right, so.
Fifty one thousand one six four eight three one. Fifty one, one six four eight three one.
Eight three one, okay, so on the new total for department seven zero dash four fifty. In the amount of fifty one million one hundred sixty four thousand eight hundred thirty one dollars, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries.
I'm gonna vote against the decrease, but I still thought the overall.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't understand. So that was a nay.
My Yankee dial. You are a yay for the sixty, but a nay for the.
I'm not gonna vote no after requesting seventy five thousand dollar cut.
No, you can do whatever you want.
Brian, you voted just for the sixty thousand, but no for the total. Thank you.
Okay. All right, department, uh, seven zero dash four sixty, I'll make a motion that we fund this in the amount of four hundred ninety seven thousand six hundred ninety four. Okay, four is open for discussion. Did you second it?
Yes.
Can we just do an original, like a motion for the total and then like?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you did that.
Oh, I guess.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I, I made the motion for four ninety seven, six ninety four, that Brian made of a, motion for an amendment. For minus twenty five. Terry? These are, these are maintenance contracts, are they not?
They're mostly maintenance contracts, understand that the reason it's going from three fifty to four ninety seven is because a hundred thousand last year was, uh, we were instructed to spend that from our one percent account. So it removed it from the operating budget. I do truly, as a diehard accountant, I do believe that it should be in the operating budget because use recurring funds for recurring expenditure. So, and we did have some price increases. Very little, there's, there's about sixty thousand in total in there. Some small projects in the, in, between the high school, middle school, and there. But the rest of it is refinishing the, um, the middle school floor, which has never been done since it was built, that was twenty five thousand.
Okay, did I recover, what was that?
So, there was just a couple of projects, because there's, because the contracts are so, so much. There's only a couple of projects that were in that small portion, I forgot what letter it is. It's like sixty seven thousand. But, um, the things that were in there was refinishing the middle school gym. Um, because it hasn't been done since it's been built, um, so that was one thing. There, we had to do some work on our high school gym, just the, in the regular maintenance of it. Right. And some small things that vary. Some damaged restroom partitions. So what would likely happen is we wouldn't be able to do those things. Right. We wouldn't do those things. Because we have to pay the contracts. Right, so we would put some of these small things, it's a total of sixty three thousand, yeah, sixty three thousand, is in there for these small projects. For a combination of the high school and middle school.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to amend by removing twenty five thousand, is there any further comments? Okay. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I, I'm, I'm a nay on that one too. I think this is one of those accounts that, uh, if we don't fund it, we'll overrun it, so.
Well, that's also that, as I mentioned before in your presentation, that and the two new schools have a lot of technical equipment in the, and, uh, those service contracts are a lot more than what we had years ago, so we, we need to keep those, uh, systems up and running properly.
Okay.
Breakdowns are costly.
Great, all right, so back to the main motion of, uh, funding in the amount of four hundred ninety seven thousand six hundred ninety four. As requested, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion carries. That concludes the budget. Brad, what is the, the bottom line total for the town?
All right. So the town, that includes debt and board of maintenance. It is thirty-four million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. It's thirty-four, three, eight, five, six, eight, zero.
Okay. All right. So I'll make a motion that we fund bottom line town inclusive of debt and four sixty account in the amount of thirty-four million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty. Is your second? All right. Seconded by Rich. Any other discussion?
I'm going to vote no, but I appreciate how cordial the meeting was. I will just state the points.
Thank you. All right. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And those opposed?
No.
Okay.
May I need a total between the two?
Yes, you do.
Eighty-five million, five hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars. So eighty-five, five, five, zero, five, one, one.
Okay. So I'll make that motion to approve eighty-five million, five hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars. Okay. Any further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. That motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Rich. And it was a cordial, productive session. And we have.
So assuming revenue is what revenue is, based on what I budgeted, it would be a mill rate increase of point four zero. Which is a percentage wise, a one point one seven percent increase in the mill rate.
One point what? I'm sorry.
One point one seven.
And what's the actual increase in spending overall? Because we're doing the million dollars course then.
Yeah. So the increase overall would be two million, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. A three point four, four percent increase in expenses.
Three point.
The reduction tonight was two oh nine, two hundred. Yep. So. Do you want to go? Are they increasing? Two million, eight, four, six, three, seven, five.
Great. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
We saw the special.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, we've, we've just got some more stuff to do. So not, not related to budget. All right. I'll entertain a, entertain a motion to adjourn. Those in favor? Aye.